Before I get on to the agenda, I've got a small statement that I'd just like to quickly read. I'd like to make a brief statement regarding a recent matter involving the town clerk. The Crona HR investigation into the complaint submitted by three councillors regarding the clerk has now been completed. The investigation found no wrongdoing by the clerk. Separately, the internal auditor also carried out a review which included related matters. Without any coordination between them, both Crona and the internal auditor have reached the same conclusion that Melanie Matthews has acted properly, professionally and lawfully in her role. However, reports highlight concerns about the culture within this council, particularly around how the clerk is treated, and that's something we must take seriously. At this point, I'll not be taking any comments. This matter has been going on for months and has caused real damage to Melanie's professional reputation, including rumours from members of the public who have only heard one side of the story. Melanie has continued to act professionally throughout. She's not had a voice in this process so far, so I will now allow her to make comments through her clerk's report. Any further discussions will take place in the confidential section of the agenda unless it is to offer an apology to Melanie right now. No? Let's get on with the agenda then. Any apologies now?
Yeah, councillors, Ansell and Hart.
Thank you. Okay, item 108, the declaration of personal and prejudicial interest or request for dispensation on any item on the agenda. Members should notify the monitor officer within 28 days if not already declared. Obviously myself. Item 124 is the town crier's livery. To make it clear now, I'd like to see if we can have a vote as to whether you would like me to continue to chair item 124 or if you'd like me to leave the meeting and come back after that and let councillor Hart deal with that. So, anybody that would like me to leave the meeting when item 124 comes up on the agenda. Okay. And anyone that would like me to stay and continue to chair the meeting through that item.
Okay, so it's not a vote.
Okay.
So usually the chair makes the final call, as it's about each other.
I don't mind it.
Take it to the vice chair to make the final call.
I'll have the chair.
That's why I didn't vote. Okay. Item 109, I'd like to now close the meeting for public sessions. Members of the public are invited to address the council on any issue on which it has power.
Hello, Jack Carlos of you all probably. This might or may not, what you've just said, have something to do with what I was about to say. Well, I'm gonna say. When the chair and whatever deputy was elected, there was a statement made to the effect that a more inclusive chamber was to be worked at. Has anything been done about this? Is it a more inclusive chamber? And has anybody got anything to say whether it is or whether it isn't?
So no one's got anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, so just from the comments, is there something saying that it's not more inclusive?
I'm asking whether you people
I think it is.
Think that it's more inclusive, it's more, less argumentative, less blah blah blah. Or it was.
It's only since from my first game.
Yeah, I think so. Under the new, with the new chair, I think absolutely, yeah. Everyone has a vote, everyone has a say, so it's a much more balanced council.
It's a council of people with a common aim that can speak freely at any time to each other and to each other to discuss a subject that's of interest to the people of the town and of interest to the council. And that's how it is from now and that's how it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Anybody else? No? Well, in which case.
Personally, I think we've still got some way to go. There are still some issues, there's still, I perceive, a lack of trust. I think there are, I'm part of a number of other councillor forums, and in my experience from those forums, when councils are hiding things, there are four cards that generally get played. One is GDPR, one is confidentiality, one is bullying and harassment, and the other is intimidation. Personally, I feel that all four of those cards have been played in this council. So, that's why I say, I think we've still got some way to go.
Yeah, so do I. Another member of the public not counselling.
Anyone else?
Anybody else? No, right. Second thing I would like to say to you, I don't know whether you're all aware, I live on Ettingham and I went to councillor Shepherd's meeting the other night, raid the parking etcetera, etcetera, round the schools. I'm very glad to see that somebody's trying to do something and all that I can say is from my vast experience, living on Ettingham for the past years, he ain't got a chance because the people who were complaining about won't and don't attend the meetings. So, I think you can back me up on that. The people there, they were all people complaining about somebody else, wasn't they? But nobody stood there and said, well, I travel parking. Nobody.
Mr Carlos, with respect from the chair, with respect, Mr Carlos, the reason they are now after 30 years is possibly because nobody ever challenges them. They've got a challenge now, if you were aware of what I've surveyed over the past three weeks, of the incidents that nearly occurred only the other day and the people that I've spoken to wasn't at the meeting because they couldn't get there, you'd be surprised at the reaction I've got. I've got emails coming out of my head now, so I'm probably biting off a little bit more than I can chew at this particular time. But they've got a councillor now that won't give up, and I will not give up. And I would expect residents of that area to pass that on to each other. You're the good ambassador of that area, the school have spoken about you, how concerned you are. You have got the same concerns as I have, so between us, we could deal with it. We had a councillor there from Stafford, very helpful, very enthusiastic. I'm enthusiastic, you're enthusiastic, that's three against the world. Between us, between us, we have to do something. If we can't cure it, we have to improve it, which I intend to do, and I hope with your help. So if you say to your neighbours, hey, well, let's listen to him. Let's get a positive argument against him and put it together, I'll listen to it.
I hope you don't think that what I've just said is any reflection on you. I was saying to these people that I'm glad to see that somebody, councillor in particular, is brave enough to stand up and say and do something. And all that I'm saying is, I'm very sorry, my man, you ain't gonna get nowhere.
Yeah, but remember this, Mr Carlos, you're now my right hand man. You've agreed that you will follow me around and make sure I do it right, okay?
Right, well, thank you.
We will work together.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Leave the thought to anyone else.
Thank you.
Can I ask you about the website, please? Who designed it and built it?
Who designed and built the school?
The website.
Oh.
The Rose website.
The Rose website, it was formulated on a Wix platform by our office manager.
And it was wide open to all sorts of horrible things to happen, that leaves the council wide open, completely wide open. I did email you and tell you about this. I mean, you can't.
We're on a business package, we're looking into what you sent on Facebook.
A lot's been changed, but it's still wide open. Anyone can just close those computers down now. Just like that, finish it, any accounts, anything like that on there, go on. Or worst, they can say, okay, pay us X amount, we'll delete it. That's how open it is, it's not, it's not a theatre, it's a building that's run by a council and it should have been done professionally, not by some jack that's just went off a template. It shouldn't have been done professionally, it's a council-run website.
Yeah, we are continuing to look into that and we will get back to you on that.
Okay, we've got it sorted quick now, haven't we, because it's just been broadcast.
Yeah, I've broadcasted.
Thank you.
So we need to get our finger right out on that one.
Anyone else? Yeah?
Thanks, Chair and councillors. Just recently, I've been doing a bit around the town, getting in and out of people, doing what I do, gobbing off etcetera, etcetera. There has been a massive change in Rugeley in the last week or so and small things like kids coming up saying, can we be on that parade with the town crier? Oh, okay. So, there's things that was put out on Monday, which we're gonna talk about, that came out. A gentleman, a nice gentleman, made some coasters. He made these coasters and he dropped them off at premises that you all know. And on it, it said, I love Rugeley, and it had Rugeley landmarks. I'm saying that because there's certain things that's been happening recently that's given people positive hope and pride in Rugeley. That's been led by the council and I'd like to congratulate the council for leading that, particularly Mel. Mel proposed an idea and I said, well, I'll check it out. And then she brought it in here and everybody agreed to it that was here, and now it's come to fruition. So, I'm saying from myself and from the people of Rugeley, thank you very much for what you're doing. What you're doing is hitting target. This weekend, I went to a mare making as consort to the chair and we sat on that mare making table having some munchies with the Lord Mayor of Burton and the Lord Mayor of Stafford and the, I don't know if it's a Lord Mayor or Right Honourable Mayor, but the other mayor was from the Moles. And all of them turned around and said how well thought of Rugeley is. And that was something that I didn't expect to hear. But they said, you guys are getting things right. And, and I told them about the event that's coming that you will talk about shortly and they turned around and said, that's absolutely amazing. To sit down outside of Rugeley with people in towns twice, three times the size of Rugeley and them to praise Rugeley was something that was quite special to me. So I'd like to say thank you firstly to Mel because without her insight, without her drive, and she could, and to be honest, I thought six months ago little Mel would have left this council, but she hasn't. She's going strong and she's leading the way. And personally, I'd like to say thank you for that. And that's me, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Last time I was at the meeting, I mentioned about Clintons and also the, you know, the lack of notification of events that's going on at the various theatre in the town. I see that Clintons is, they're still trying to put an HMO there and I see there's now another large HMO coming up, another seven rooms. The council put an objection to that HMO, didn't they, as a group from the council? That is still seen to be on, it's still ongoing, isn't it? So are we gonna put a complaint and again field a seven room on as well as this eight room as well? Because it seems like Canick have decided to put an HMOs in the town. And we're trying to keep it as a town, not as a HMO, you know? So I think the council have put an objection in.
Yeah, through the chair. I objected against the first one as, because I'm a local to the area. They wrote to me and said, are the only objections, and I've given my objections. They actually turned down the initial planning and then went back to whoever owns it to see that they changed it. It's come back to the table, but nothing's been changed on it. So I've turned, I've done exactly the same objection, I've even spoken to a lovely lady and said why. I've put the same objection in against it. And I think we believe we need to have the police involved again and get them to object as well as the council.
I sent an objection in as well for the chair. I sent an objection in for Clintons and the horse fair, the HMO.
And I've sent an email to full council and I'm translating all of the comments into a formal council response so like last time, we'll do another one for this resubmission and for the one on horse fair.
Yeah, the, like I said last time I came down, I was talking about the lack of advertising for the Rose Theatre. I don't use Facebook really now and I don't look, the only time I look on the internet really is for advertisements, things like that. But there's still no advertisements for events or anything actually in the town. Somebody walked into the town from outside to visit the town. There aren't any such large houses or anything or events that's going in the town. Things which like Charter Fair or anything like that, none of that. So I think you need to look at more better advertising for the theatre and also promoting events for Rugeley, otherwise nobody's gonna see them.
Turn up to the down street chair, sorry. I also, I'm gonna put it to this council what we're required for for the agenda today, so I was gonna bring it to you, was have a notice board within the town stating what's going on. Anyway, it doesn't matter necessarily at the Rose, but what's going on in Rugeley? Have it on billboards as you come in or, and try and get it out there that we do put stuff on and that people can see it.
And one suggestion I had, I've mentioned before, you can actually purchase a 65 inch vertical display screen, which is mobile, you can actually put that in the town and then you can put live events on that actual display board. It costs about, it's costed about £2,100 to buy, but you don't pay that, so you cost somewhere about £1,800. But it'll give you live access to promote businesses, you can have businesses that are putting their advertisements on. You can put all the events like charity there and also things like you were talking about, sort of, you know, parades. Put all that as a live event. But also we have an issue where people put posters up in the town and they don't take them down. So these things would be live, so you could put them up and then the day they're finished, you could put something else on. So for £2,000, you could change it slightly. You could put one in the Rose and put one saying, the Rugeley's Row.
Yeah, so we have been looking into this. Apart from obviously that there's been an agenda and councillor vacancy having to go on the notice board. Prior to Friday, they were pastored of about six different posters for the Rose Theatre. We have now got a good connection with the library, we're now cross posting for them and likewise, vice versa. We have looked into a digital board, I spoke to a company and they were really supportive and said about a deal that's coming up in the next couple of months to hold fire at the minute. And that was taken to the Rose meeting a while ago, where councillor Newman was there. We, I've also asked for a slot on the radio regarding the events coming out next year and with the other staff. We're also in the middle of putting a poster together where it's detailing strips going down of the different events coming up for the council, which we're gonna put into independent shop windows so that the whole year is coming out. We've also been speaking to a lot of independent shops that really wanna work with us. So yeah, there's loads of discussions going on. It's probably slower than you'd like, I totally appreciate that. But there is work going on in the background to solve this issue.
Okay, the last one is, do you know where we are with the cycle rack that's supposed to be in Rugeley, outside of Rugeley, okay?
Yeah, we're 80% there. I've got the engagement officer currently doing a full PowerPoint on that project along with other projects that's gonna be presented in September to council to decide what the spending, the silver money on and when that is part of that.
To me, it seems ridiculous that 12 months ago you had like a, you know, an engagement committee and the town crier actually raised this particular item about having this cycle rack put in at the bottom of the Rugeley, okay? And we're talking about September now and having displays and all this, you're thinking, what is going on? How much red tape do people have to be putting in the councils to actually achieve such a small thing? It's not major, is it?
Unfortunately, it did take eight months to get the licence to use land through district and then just as we were about to build on it, the funding got poured off us. So unfortunately, it's been kind of out of our control. As much as we've chased things and we've tried to argue against where funding's been taken off us, we're trying our best to keep our promises to the public and using money that is from the town council now to fund us instead of using other funding options so we don't let the public down. So all I can do is apologise on the delays, it's been a bit out of our hands.
Yeah, it's not me, it's Rugeley Town that's losing now because they're not getting us the cycle back as they probably wanted at that time. But now, the action, you know, the rolling ball is trying to slow down a lot. It's got more and less of interest in it now because it's just not happening. Okay, have been.
Thank you, Mr Lewis. Okay, item 110 on the agenda, I'd like to reopen the council meeting. Next item is 111, which are the minutes.
Yeah, sorry, typo, it should be the minutes from the full council of 18th of June 2025. And on the actual minutes, I put yourself as present, Chair, which you are absent, so I do apologise. And you did send an apology, so I just need to put on yourself on the apologies on item 17.
So councillor Kirk?
Just a general comment really, I think this was one that was raised a couple of years ago. But could we have an indication on the minutes, we always used to, it seems to have dropped off now, about who's actually presiding, who's chairing the meeting?
With those amendments then that Mel has just mentioned, proposals to confirm and accept the minutes with full council on the 18th of June 2025 as true and accurate record. Does everyone have time to read those minutes? Do we have a proposal for that?
I'll propose it.
And the second one? Can we have a show of hands then, please? Okay, item 12 is the full council chair and vice chair reports. So I'll go first. Firstly, I'd like to welcome the gentleman, sort of the three to my left, from Staffordshire County Council. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Carrying on with what I've done over the last month, it's been quite a busy month. So on the 22nd of June, I attended the Lee Hall Brass Band Summer Concert with councillor Ansell. It was a great night, it wasn't as well attended as the Christmas one, so if anyone's free for the next ones, please. It is a free event that they put on and they do a raffle to make funds, etcetera, etcetera. On the 5th of July, I attended the Canick Chase District Council Civic Service with councillor Hart. Again, that was a really great event, meeting lots of councillors along the way. The 13th of July, last Sunday, myself and aide the town crier, attended the Stone Mayor Civic Service. Again, church service, met some really lovely people. We're making actually lots of great connections across the county and there were a lot of councils that actually really, really wanna work with us. I've also been in touch with the office while Mel's been away to make sure they're all okay and they're doing everything above board and that is it for me.
Myself, I've also attended the civic service with the chair. I've been in contact with several other chairs, vice chairs and mayors of other towns, villages, seaside, coastal. Just to see what they do different to us, what we can bring from there to here. One of which was a unitary council, so that was quite different to how we run things. It works for some, it doesn't work for some others. And basically, that's it for me at the moment.
Thank you very much. Item 114, which is the clerk's report.
Excuse me, Chair, just before you go on, could you introduce the gentlemen, because I have no idea who it is?
Councillor John Pendleton?
Yeah. From Staffordshire County Council. Yeah. Thank you.
Pleased to meet you.
Good evening.
Sorry, John.
It's all right, no problem.
Mel, clerk's report.
Yeah, so I've now successfully completed two in-house pay runs, which went smoothly and marks a positive step in managing this process internally. I've completed and submitted the bid application for the town crier national championships. Many thanks goes to Lucia, who, her valuable support with marketing the markets and events during her recent work experience there with us was absolutely amazing, she got really stuck into it. Then, following her appraisal, Lucia's taken the lead on organising a community drop-in event to support local residents, further enhancing our outreach and engagement efforts. I've submitted a follow-up email to Mazars with the required supporting evidence, ensuring we meet all outstanding order requirements. Lovely one next, Lucia has now passed her L Care qualification, demonstrating real commitment to her professional development. Our remainder of July and August will be taking opportunity to focus on my self-qualification in continuing developing a strategic plan for devolution, sorting outstanding agreed proposals and finishing the presentation that Lucia's worked hard on while I've been on holiday to spend some of our silver money. Furthermore, I'd just like to read this statement regarding the lonely man, lonely Joe. Reach town council would like to extend heartfelt thanks to the local businesses and individuals who gave, have once again gone above and beyond to support our town. Thanks to the generosity of Blueprint, Brew Street Shopping Centre, Jungle Juniors, Craze Carpets and a member of public who wishes to remain anonymous. With ongoing support throughout from Angi Cooney, the broken lonely man statue is now being respectfully replaced by lonely Joe in the mindfulness garden. This installation brings a renewed charm to the area and reflects the community spirit we're so proud of in Rugeley. While councillor did raise concerns regarding the previous statue, I've looked into the matter and can confirm that the lonely man is owned by C Residential Angi Cooney. Importantly, local businesses have finally stepped forward once again to fund the restoration of the original statue, where we're viewed to relocating it to a more suitable spot in town, potentially the Broad Walk, now that the missing foot has been returned, thanks to councillor Miller for its safekeeping. It is unfortunate that I had to spend taxpayers' money and officer's time investigating what was reported as a potential theft only to discover that individuals were in effect working hard to do something positive for the community. That time could have been spent much better supporting other projects and doing more good for Rugeley. On behalf of the council and the wider community, thank you to all who continue to support the beauty, heritage and upkeep of our market town. Your commitment helps ensure that Rugeley remains a place of pride and character for everyone. Going on to agenda wording, I want to briefly address the concerns raised by councillor G regarding the use of the word proposal instead of recommendation on our agendas. Firstly, this wording has been in place for over a year during my time in post and was carried out on a previous clerk. It is not new and it's become the established working style of this council. At the last meeting, I was repeatedly hounded over this point and it continued to be brought up throughout the meeting, delaying agenda items unnecessarily and disrupting the proper flow of business. That time could have been better used dealing with the actual matters affecting Rugeley. At that meeting, we hit the time limit as per standard orders. To ensure clarity and professionalism, I sought formal advice from Society of Local Council Clerks. They are responsible, twist or clear, and I quote, regarding your wording on agendas, there is no formal requirement whether the phrase is proposal, to receive, recommendation or consideration. For my agenda, I tend to use the such phrase as to consider, but it is purely down to house style. This confirms that the terminology is simply a matter of house style, not legality or correctness. The majority of councillors have expressed no objection and are content with current approach. Therefore, I continue to use the term proposal in line with our existing practice, house style. Councillor Fodecheck, as you've said before that I need to prove my statements, I have the SRCC email ready for you to read and as that wasn't good enough last time, I've also provided the original email I sent them. So you can see exactly what was asked and what was answered. Once again, I find it unfortunate that I must spend time justifying routine administrative decisions when that time would be far better spent working on things that actually benefit Rougeley people. Then finally, um, thank you Chair for showing that I've done no wrong in this council. Members of the council. I don't make this statement lightly. But after years of bullying, harassment and relentless obstruction, I can no longer stay silent. Since joining this council, first as finance officer, now as clerk, I have faced targeted hostility from a group of councillors determined to undermine officers, delay progress and damage this council's reputation. I'm not the first to endure this, previous clerks, officers and councilors have all walked away. That should concern every one of us. Let me be absolutely clear, this is not normal, it is not acceptable and it must stop. I am standing here today, not just to defend myself, but to demand accountability. I'm calling for formal apologies and resignations to those councillors who per se contributed to this toxic culture, in particular councillors Kirkham, Miller, Gay, Botack and Clark. Your actions have not supported Rougeley, you've actively harmed this council, misused public resources and targeted staff without justification. You have dragged officers through endless demands of proof and invented scandal, not out of duty, but out of ego and control. Despite this, I continue to serve with professionalism. I seek advice, I follow procedure, I act only when it's lawful and in the public interest. And that is why, after two entirely independent investigations, one from Corona HR and one by the internal auditor, the outcome is crystal clear, I've done nothing wrong. The Corona investigation was launched after a complaint from councillor Kirkham about the recruitment of the operations manager, a complaint that placed full blame on me. Yet this was not the first complaint submitted, my complaint, one of many, was raised earlier, was completely ignored. That decision to look at only one side is not just flawed, it's also fundamentally unfair. It suggests deliberate undermining, not impartiality. To make matters worse, councillor Gay was selected specifically to act as impartial mediator. But because he was supposedly not involved in any complaint and yet, behind the scenes, he submitted what I can only describe as a deeply inappropriate and quite frankly awful statement against me to Corona. This not only betrayed the neutrality he was entrusted with, it actively worsened the situation and further escalated pressure on me as an officer. It gets worse. After a formal interview with Sue Wellins, by a safer formal interview, more integration, she informed councillor Gay that her early impressions were that I acted properly. Almost immediately, three additional statements were submitted against me, from councillors Kirkham, Miller and Gay himself. This was done without any communication to me and without notifying the wider council that selective and secretive escalation is a breach of trust and it shows that confidential information was weaponised, not managed responsibly. Once again, I, the subject of the investigation, was last to know. While those conversations happened behind closed doors, I was left waiting in silence for months with no right to reply while rumours spread in the community. That kind of conduct is not governance, it's sabotage. I've been told by councillor Clark, I'm too young to be listened to, that I should do what I'm told by my older councillors.
Sorry, was that my name you just mentioned?
Sorry.
You're speaking a bit quick.
Just finish, sorry.
No, was that my name?
Clerk, let her just finish.
I haven't heard what she said.
If you listen.
Go on, I'm trying to, I'm seeing if I've been accused of my name here or something. You can repeat the name that you've just quoted.
Councillor Clark.
So that I understand what you're saying.
Councillor Clark, I won't tell you again.
Right.
Let the clerk finish, you can then ask questions.
Unless I give councillor Kirkham a hug, the air can't be cleared, these events will wait next. This is not professionalism, this is not how public servants should be treated. That is not how a lawful democratic council should operate. Let me say this again, wrecking careers should not be a hobby, mental health is not a joke. Undermining officers isn't politics, it's misconduct. Despite all of this, both Corona HR and the internal auditor, working entirely independently, confirmed I acted lawfully, properly and professionally at every step. Yet, I've spent months venting off personal vendettas while trying to do my job I'm here to do. I will not resign, I will not be pushed out because I operate above board, I serve Rougeley with integrity and I will not be broken down by those who refuse to behave with basic decency. This council must decide what kind of organisation it wants to be. If you cannot work with integrity, professionalism and respect, then you should not be sitting at this table. Rougeley deserves better and so do the officers who serve it. Thank you, so who want to apologise and who will step down?
Well, I'd rather you apologise for what you've accused us of, it's utter nonsense.
Councillor Foecheck.
Councillor Foecheck, she mentioned we can ask questions. So in front of camera, what I would like to ask, by standing up as a councillor and asking question, being opposition and don't believe what you say so because you think so without seeing evidence, is that something wrongdoing as a councillor and for that reason you asked me to resign? Well, how? I'm not going to say anything else, but I will ask all the councillors in this room. Is not our right to ask questions, is not our right to say our word? Is not the democracy as a free speech speaking out what we're thinking and asking about the facts? Is not that right? And now because I did ask that question, you didn't like the question I asked and you as a clerk, you asked me to resign? Well, I'm telling you, I'm not going to resign for this question. I think it's a democracy in UK and we have the free speech. And if the public want to ask questions, I will represent them. And if they want to find out answer, I'm going to send that forwards. That's why I'm here, I'm not here to please you the way you want, I'm not here to please other groups without agreeing with them and without asking and understanding what they're saying.
Thank you, councillor Foecheck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Councillor Kirk.
I have to say that the erosion of trust in this council is not accidental, right? It stems directly from repeated breaches of procedure, selective interpretation of governance and silencing of dissenting voices. Councillors have to decide now whether they wish to uphold transparency and accountability or whether they want to continue enabling dysfunction under the guise of unity. Am I going to resign? No.
Thank you, councillor Kirk.
No, we're not going to resign, we're not going to go away. And we will be a thorn if we need to be, I'm afraid. You can't keep quoting, it's not the facts.
Clerk, I won't give you a second chance, please. I'm trying to speak to councillor Miller.
Of course, she'll raise the video, I suppose.
Councillor Clark, this is your last warning, you will be ejected from the meeting. Councillor Miller.
I put a complaint in and I won't be apologising. I have evidence that the clerk said that she had steer from the HR and that we employed the current operations manager with no interview. Councillor Jones put out an email and I've got a copy of the email saying we had no steer from HR and that we're going with interviews. So there's two different stories, one of them's right, one of them's wrong.
Councillor Foecheck.
The clerk's statement was put on an official minutes document. And I've got the evidence. I can't see how we can have two varying versions and both of them are correct because they're both contradicting trouble.
Through the Chair.
Yep.
Uh, regarding the operations manager's interview, out of all the CVs that we had, two of them were from existing councillors. And the one, sorry. No, we took two existing councillors and the other one went over and above in his CV and he was the ideal candidate. I asked at the time, at the meeting, had we had a steer from HR? And the clerk said, no, we hadn't. However, when we came out of the meeting, she did get the steer from HR. And that's why I recommended as the Chair of the Staffing Committee that the job should go to Owen.
In all due respect, Chair, that's not what he wrote in his email.
Okay.
Have you wrote it in the moment, Derek?
Through the Chair.
Sorry, councillor.
Yeah, before, before.
Sorry councillor, clerk, councillor Wilson.
Um, I understand Mel's anger or disappointment, she's been through it. I haven't been through it, I just think calling for resignations, I think that's a big, we all have different opinions, we don't get on. You know, that's what makes a council. People know my views and whatever, but even I don't think calling for resignation, that's not correct. Everybody has different views, I might agree with them, I might not, they may not agree with me. But I just think resignations, if Mel thinks she deserves an apology, morally that's down to these gentlemen, I don't really know kind of went on, but I just think that that's been for.
Please, put your hand up.
Yeah, and obey the rules like everybody else is.
Thank you, I think it's time to move on from that point. Okay, item one one five on the agenda, which is finance. The bank reconciliations, has everyone had time to look at them? And then write up? Okay, so the proposal is to confirm and accept the bank reconciliation for June.
I'll take it, Chair.
Thank you, do we have a second for that? Can we have a show of hands for that then please? Okay, and are you against the proposal?
No, I've got them.
Okay, no problem, councillor Miller.
I got here that it was attached, but it wasn't and I didn't, I've not got no internet, so I can't. I can't remember where I'm checking.
Um, item one one six, the income and expenditure. So there's a proposal to confirm and accept the income and expenditure report for June. Has everyone had time to look at that one? Thank you, do we have a proposal for that then please?
Sorry, can I ask you a question on that before we actually vote it? And that is that we've been running some open mic sessions with Gig Social. I don't see anything on the income list from Gig Social.
Because it started last month and the income is from the previous month, so it won't be in just yet.
So we already had a proposal, do we have a second at that point? Thank you, and a show of hands then please? Are you against those, councillor Kirk?
Uh, no, I actually wanted to raise another item on the income and expenditure section.
Okay.
And that is that I actually, um, when I was looking for the income and expenditure report, I actually came across the income and expenditure report for April of this year. And I think I touched on this in one of the earlier meetings and that is, according to my recollections, um, in terms of the budget that was set, we budgeted for four staff. And, um, well, I actually did the sums in terms of, very roughly, in terms of when staff started and left. I reckon we actually had sixty percent of the budgeted staff. Looking at the actual expenditure in terms of, um, staff costs, we appear to have spent eighty percent of the budget. So that eighty percent of the budget amounts to about twenty four thousand pound. So my request from the clerk is can we have a reconciliation please between the budget and the actuals in terms of the contracted hours that were actually expended and where the additional money was spent in terms of authorisations? And that is not targeting the clerk and accusing anybody of dishonesty, that is just trying to carry out a good deal.
So we had, did you get a vote down for that? Show of hands, yes? Okay, so the next proposal is to confirm and accept the progress, um, budget to date. Did everyone see?
Uh, you lost me there, clerks, uh, Chair, sorry. Budget to date.
Yeah, so for the last few months, we've added that on as per the auditors, um, comments. So I mean, from an expenditure, it's a budget to date, eighty percent is what was from April to now.
I haven't got a copy of that. No.
Well, isn't that what you've just commented on?
Uh, no, I've commented on this.
Receipts.
You've commented on the receipts and payments.
I commented on the April one, yeah.
The April one, not the June one. Did anybody else look at the right-hand side of that, um, income expenditure sheet?
I didn't print it.
You didn't print it, okay.
I printed it, but I haven't got it.
Okay, so as some of you haven't read it, do we have anybody that is going to propose that that be correct? Yep. Okay, item one one seven, payments. So the proposal is to accept and process payments for July. Has everyone read that? Yeah?
Yeah.
Do we have a proposal for that then?
Receipts.
And the seconder? And a show of hands then please? Okay, item one one eight is planning, it's, um, planning applications within the last month is to note the planning applications. We should have had a sheet with the two on, so everybody noted what those are. Obviously, Mel's going to put something together to send a collective, I believe. Yes, councillor Kirk.
The question that I've got is, is it best that we actually put a collective response through from the council? Does that carry more weight? Or would we be better objecting to that planning application as individuals?
As councillor Mason has already said, she has already sent in an objection, so it wouldn't hurt to do both, I think.
Right, okay.
Health and safety, item one one nine. So members are advised that an incident occurred in which an unusual noise and a burning smell were detected originating from the solar installation. As a precaution, the solar system was immediately shut down and energy box, the installation contractor was contacted. Um, an engineer attended site midweek to investigate and address the issue. A full report on the cause and any required remedial work is being, we're waiting for that still. Um, we have a fire door with a broken part and this is now being ordered to be replaced.
Yeah, so just an update on solar panel, we're waiting for a new part. The person that ascended site is actually the installer, so he has to be the one to fix it. There will be no charge to us and it'll be fixed as soon as the part is delivered. And we have checked it's fine for solar to be turned on. Obviously, it can't be turned on, it's a danger at the minute.
Fire, have you not fire insurance? Fire, if you've fire, you haven't seen the fire. You're talking about the theatre.
So I was thinking, take our, uh, help and safety at Corona and they, because it's an external one and because of how the fire door is and the part, it's just the sensor at the bottom of the door that's not working, which is our security arms.
Oh, so the door's working, it's just the security. And what does it say on there?
There's a fault inside the door that's missing as well, which we ordered that part. The whole door's been flipped, so there's part of it and inside it.
Can you get through it if there's a fire?
If there's a fire, yes.
Yeah.
It's just locking it more securely.
It's in a, she pushed wide, fresh guy.
Just, you need to, oh, it's just a fire, you let me show it, isn't it?
Councillor Foecheck, sorry.
When the solar panels were switched off, was the battery already off or was on?
It was on. That's okay, okay, so item one twenty, the policies, update policies. So the proposal is to approve the comments, compliments and complaints policy and the community engagement policy as per the policy tracker.
Through the Chair.
Yeah.
Um, the comments, compliments and complaints policy states the Staffing Committee. Have we reinstated the Staffing Committee?
Where does it state the Staffing Committee? I'm sorry, I missed that one. I thought I talked them all off, I do apologise.
Through the Chair. According to our standing orders, supposed to get the papers three days, three clear days in advance notice. These policies, I admit, I haven't looked at them, apart from to skim one, I picked up the same error that you have. Is there any reason why those have to come out with the papers? Can they not come out before? And what I would suggest, if we actually defer that item, because just sending them out with one day's notice is in conflict with our standing orders.
Mine came out on email. It was last week.
On email last week?
That's when I reviewed mine.
Can we have a vote then for everyone that would like that item to be deferred until you've all had longer to read them? Okay. Thank you.
What I'll do then, chair, is I'll change that staffing committee on, and I'll resubmit them by time to full council, so we've got them fresh.
Thank you very much. Item one two one, the Rose Theatre Task and Finish Group. That's councillor Parks, isn't it? I know he's in hospital, Rose, have you got anything on him? Because you've been away, haven't you? Has he left you anything, Mel?
No, I must just suggest that maybe we call a task and finish group, and just get up today on things.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we did say that we were going to go visit councillor Parks. Yeah, we didn't with this week, see how he's getting on. Item one two two is the community engagement task and finish group. Councillor Jones, would you like to give an update?
Yes, we've, uh, Connect twenty five, uh, is on the ninth of August, and that's all sorted. Christmas lights, they're building the lights as we speak, that will be on the twenty ninth of November. Kevin Lee's retirement honours, uh, in September, it's the fifty years as he's been in service. And that's going to be done at Lee Hall. With the brass band. We're looking into it.
Being looked into at the moment.
Yeah, okay. VJ Day, uh, we're looking into Lee Hall Brass Band for the fifteenth of August, starting at seven thirty. That's VJ Day, which will be very similar to VE Day, uh, but they're going to change the signage. The Remembrance Day, um, invites have gone out, and it's the first week in September. And we've decided to have chairs at the Senat for the veterans and an area which will be barrier'd off for the mums and dads of the scouts, so that they can take photographs. And then the last thing is the Cars in the Town. The end of September, the twenty eighth, which will be the Sunday, the clerk is going to put together a plan.
We're just looking at it, aren't we, at the moment?
We're looking at it. So the plan will be put together, um, through councillor Meeson. We've got plenty of cars that can, that can come.
We'll bring it back to full council.
Yeah.
For the next one.
So the next council meeting will bring it to the council. So we should have some, some issues ironed out by then. That's it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kirkham?
Cars in the Town, I thought we'd had this on an earlier agenda item. And it was voted that we weren't going to have cars in the town, but we were looking at having cars in the park. We were looking at Hagley Field.
It was voted to be brought back.
It was voted to be brought back on a different day with more, fuller pan, so, um, that's what we're looking after.
Right, perhaps, perhaps it's my recollection then, because I thought we'd voted not to have cars in the town.
I know it was, it was mentioned again. There was another vote, I think you weren't here, councillor Kirkham.
Right, okay, right. But how did that come back to the table then, in that case, we voted one thing? And yet, within three months, we voted, we reversed the vote?
We haven't reversed the vote. The vote that was agreed on was that it would be brought back to council, because there was too many issues with it when it first got brought to council.
Okay, right.
Okay, on to item one two three, Jen.
On to the community engagement, is there no feedback on the charter fair and the artisan market relaunch?
The charter fair was done last month.
It was done, it was done at the, so it hasn't finished the three months yet.
Through the chair, we did have a briefing on, at the last meeting. That you were.
We're not at that one, can't.
Regarding the charter fair.
Regarding charter fair, and I know the artisan market is, um, is for three months, isn't it, as a trial? So I'm presuming something will come back after that three months.
So we've got no initial feedback, is what I'm asking, for the big relaunch?
For, uh, well, everybody in town loved it, the ice, or obviously I work right outside it, um, I don't know the rest of the town, if I've been in touch or anything.
All the people were positive, through the chair, uh, all the people were positive that it was in the town rather than ugly, uh, green line fields.
Sorry, were we talking about the artisan market?
Talking about the artisan market, councillor Jones.
Beg your pardon, I was talking about the charter fair.
It's just been two things, I've heard everything, get it on here, and then with three days' notice, and yeah, so.
There is one?
Only personal, nothing that's been collated at the moment, that there's been one, um, one Saturday.
Okay, no initial feedback?
Not to come to this meeting, it'll be gathered, it's, we've literally just only had it last weekend, so we just need a bit of time, we've been working on other things.
General business, item one two three, the town crier national championships, I'll leave Mel to give you an update.
Yeah, so myself and the town crier sat down, thank you, Aid, um, and wrote up the bid to send for the national championships, as agreed in full council the previous meeting, and we were successful. Um, so the national championships being held in Brugesly next year alongside charter fair. Um, so we'll have to get, um, plans in place sooner rather than later for that, so I'll start hitting, um, the hotels with getting accommodation sorted and everything addressed, and bring it all back to council before anything is formally agreed. Um, we did really well with the bid, um, hope the town crier agrees that, um, we were up against some stiff competition, and we actually got told, not to big myself up, but our bid was the best I'd seen in years, so, um, yeah. Something really good, and look forward to having that next year, and having a lot of different town criers in the nation and some international come to Brugesly.
Councillor Meeson, sorry.
Can I just say as well, that went out on Facebook the other day, and the positivity that went through the town that day was just, it was, it was a feeling of complete mental awe, brilliant.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kirkham, you want to say something?
I'm glad Aid's here, actually, because.
I'm here for questions.
The last, um, national championship, what I was going to suggest is that we actually approached the council, right, who ran the last national championships. Now, it's pointless reinventing the wheel, somebody's already been through it, and we can learn from them, right? So I had a, for some, for some reason, I've got Bromsgrove in my head, right? But when I had to look on Google, it actually said that the national championships of twenty twenty four were held in October in Rye, right?
No, no, it was Montgomery.
Twenty twenty five.
You're talking, uh, the National Open Championships is in Rye every year.
Okay, right, I'm sure there'll be a simple solution.
Twenty twenty four is Montgomery, and twenty twenty five, it was Bromsgrove.
Right, it's down as the National Town Crier Championships.
It's, it's, um, it is the Ancient and Honourable Guild of Town Criers National Championship. That's the correct title.
And we're running?
The Ancient and Honourable Guild of Town Criers National Championship.
So what is the one that was held in Rye?
It is the National Open Championship. So in other words, if you're not registered, let me explain, that's why I'm here for questions.
That's why I'm confused.
Anybody can be a town crier, you can leave here now, go and get a fancy dress, go to the town, and you're in the back. You declare yourself a town crier, you can go to Rye and compete. However, if you are, um, elected by a council, if you are, um, a signatory to, um, their code of conduct, and, um, you are within their rules, and you pay your subs, you are insured for ten million pounds, and you are, um, allowed to attend Ancient and Honourable Guild of Town Criers competitions. This is their national, the Ancient Honourable Guild of Town Criers is not just, um, British. It is actually Canadian, American, Australian, um, and that's why we get internationals on there as well. As a member of the Ancient Honourable Guild of Town Criers, I can go to the national championships in Canada next year.
Thank you.
To write the bid, actually, myself and Aid got up previous applications and leaflets and what they did, and I questioned quite a bit on them, didn't I, Aid, and said, why would they do that, why didn't they do this? And we put together plans from previous ones, and hopefully made it a better one, so we get the best.
And today I forwarded, um, an additional to that from Bromsgrove, which is everything they've learnt and everything they did on theirs has been forwarded to you today, Mark.
Yes, I'm sorry, councillor Gay, put this hand up previously.
Thank you, chair, so I believe the, um, the budget for this is allocated three thousand pounds, it's going to be held within budget, is it? As agreed on these minutes that we've just agreed this evening, yeah, thank you.
So, so we've had feedback from the, from the National Criers Guild or whoever on the last ones, right? Is it, is it not worthwhile opening up a dialogue with Bromsgrove Council, uh, town council, or district council, or parish council, whoever was behind it, and actually setting up a meeting to, uh, basically see how they think it went, yeah? And what they would change if they were going to do it again?
We can look into that certainly, councillor Kirkham?
Thank you.
Okay, item one two four, which is the town crier livery.
Chair, just a point of order, can I just ask who actually submitted this agenda item?
Sorry?
Who submitted the agenda item?
The town crier spoke to me, and I said there was budget, so it was on the agenda. For council to consider.
Can I ask a second question then, chair? The allocated town crier budget? Has it got a budget line? I don't remember agreeing to a budget line for the town crier.
Yeah, it was agreed with the budget, yeah, with the precept and the budget, it was grown down.
As, sorry, three chair, as the budget line is, as?
Three mountains on there, isn't it? That's the amount that was agreed.
No, as to who, to exactly, to the town crier?
It's for all expenses to put under the town crier.
Yeah, I mean, just to, just to reinforce what councillor Gay just said, you know, uh, I, I wasn't, I certainly didn't register the fact that we got a separate budget line in there, so if we have, that's great, yeah?
Okay, so the current livery worn by the town crier is becoming worn and in need of replacement. Council has asked to consider approving the use of the allocated town crier budget to allow the town crier to purchase new livery for use at its official events and appearances on behalf of Brugesly Town Council.
Yeah, so, um, what is required is a new hat, um, a waistcoat and a coat ideally, and obviously we want our town crier looking the best for the championship, so it would be worn on those.
Chair, can I just ask for a name vote on this one?
Absolutely, obviously I won't be voting anyway, so. So the proposal is to allow the town crier to purchase new livery within the budget limits, sorry, councillor Kirkham?
Yeah, um, I think we tripped over this once, once before in terms of allocating money to an individual, right? I'm not sure as a council that we actually have that within our powers to do. Because anything we spend, anything we spend, it has to be for the benefit of the community, right? Now, I think the situation we've had in the past is when, you know, groups of people have been, uh, allocated amounts of money to spend, right? Um, and the theory there was that although it's okay to donate money from the council to a charity, right, not to an individual. Now, I think I see a way through this where we can actually, if the purchase of the equipment actually comes through the council, and the items are actually retained as owned by the council in the custody of the town crier, then I think that's, that would be okay.
All purchases are put in the contract that we have with the town crier. So there's already a contract with the town crier, which is why it's not going to an external organisation, body, person as such. So, um, because he comes under the town council like an employee or a volunteer or whatever, it's just given him his uniform really, but, um, I'm sure Aid won't mind. It was going to be purchased through the council's funds anyway, so we can track the funds.
Right, I mean, just for, again, just for due diligence, it needs to be tracked, and it needs to be itemised, uh, and the ownership needs to stay with the council, yeah? Just, you know, it may be in a contract, but I'm not sure that that contract is potentially within our power to give, yeah?
Councillor Gay would like a noted for the, you want the names?
Oh, name vote, yes, please.
Okay, so do we have a proposal for that? Do we have a proposal?
Are we, are we amending the proposal to say that the items are retained as ownership by the council?
What does it say in there?
I can amend it, it was just automatically like that, it was all on the conclusion, okay. Sorry, councillor Shepherd, sorry, I believe Aid wants to say something, I will allow it because it is to do with that quickly.
The contract I signed said, stated that if, if the council pays for anything, then it is council property, and I am not to be able to wear it, um, outside of anything that's not sanctioned by the council. It is traditional for the town crier, when they lay up their belt, to hand over the uniform that's paid for by the councils, and it stands in the corner or stands in a museum, it becomes, it goes back to the council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for that then, please?
Chair, can I, can I just be clear on what the proposal is now?
The proposal is to allow the town crier to purchase new livery within that budget that has been set. Obviously, the, the council is, is going to buy it.
Right, and, and the ownership of those items stays with the council?
Which has just been said, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so do we have a second, or sorry? And can we have a show of hands then, please?
Oh, carry on, hang on, I haven't got one down, because it's a name vote.
Yeah, it's a name vote. Okay, so councillor Gay, you are?
Against.
Against that, councillor Gay against, councillor Fochet? Councillor Fochet abstaining. Everyone else, did you go? Thank you very much. Item one two five is the heritage steering group. Um, on the fourth of June, the heritage steering group met at the town council office at two thirty P M. This meeting has originally been requested by councillor Kirkham to Lucy, but the clerk had advised there was no staff availability to support it. Despite this, the meeting was arranged to take place in the bar area, with an understanding that councillors would attend to open and close the building. Unfortunately, no councillors attended to facilitate this. In order not to cancel the meeting, given attendees had travelled, the clerk remained on site, resulting in her leaving work late and being significantly delayed in collecting her child from school. The meeting summary, the group discussed the current dry conditions of Hagley Fields with the Environment Agency, developing plans to improve long-term drainage. This will require both planning and funding. It was noted that the original flood defence system was approved on the condition that it would not impact the field's usability for sports, reinforcing the need for remedial action. Ongoing funding opportunities were also discussed to enhance the heritage trail. It was assumed within the meeting that the town council would provide both funding for both the heritage trail and Hagley Fields projects, based on previous discussions. However, the clerk clarified that any financial contribution would require a formal council resolution. The group also mentioned holding quarterly meetings at the town council office. However, the office team had not been informed, and the last council proposal currently states that rooms may not be booked free of charge, including charities and community groups. The only exception is the community cor, sorry, the community hub, which there are too many attendees for this instance. which there are too many attendees for this instance. Yes, councillor Kirkham?
Can I make one or two corrections?
Okay.
Right, and that is I hadn't requested the meeting. The meeting had originally been called by Cannick Chase District Council. This was following a lot of work that I personally put into, to actually bring together county council, district council, town council and the Environment Agency and the lease of the field, yeah? The date of the meeting was changed, right? And I would have been here for that meeting, but had it not been changed, probably was going to be away. So I'd arranged for councillor, at the time councillor Parks and councillor Gay were going to attend. As it happened, neither of them did. So it wasn't a meeting that I called, I just want to make that perfectly clear, right? I'm glad the meeting went ahead, so apologies to Mel for the inconvenience. Picking kids up from school is never easy. But the fact that the meeting went ahead is appreciated, right? The last meeting that I attended, which I think I reported at council, was that the Environment Agency were awaiting funds so they could investigate the lack of drainage in that field. The comments about it was assumed that the town council would provide funding for both heritage trail and the Hagley Fields. What I'd actually said at the meeting was that we had SIL funding, right? And that had also been discussed in a further meeting, where we would be able to allocate funds for new materials that might be used to reinforce the banking of the stream. So if there was any assumptions made by the other groups in that council, that was not anything whether to come from me or anybody else associated with this council, right? And I'd also made it very clear that even if it was SIL funds that we're allocating, then that would require a formal council resolution. So I'm glad we've top and tail that one. So that's really all I wanted to say. I am surprised to see, again, the question is, and whether this is a point of order or whether we can actually roll it into here. But in future, if councillors want to propose something, right? Can we see on the agenda who the proposer is for these proposals? Because it's not immediately obvious at times who is actually speaking for these proposals. So whether to allocate a budget to support the Hagley Fields drainage project? How can we allocate a budget when I haven't got a clue what it's going to cost?
Thank you councillor Kirkham.
Are you wanting to shut me up?
I was just going to go into the proposal and then you just carried on. Sorry councillor Gay.
Chair, I've got the district council's position through councillor, district councillor David Williams. I mean, a brief of his, the district council position for the context of Cannick Chase District Council has demonstrated substantial commitments to this project. Five thousand already invested in preparatory works. Thirty thousand committed from the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, provisional subject to formal approval. Strategic priority within the broader Rugeley regeneration planning. Note, we also want to see similar commitment and intention from Rugeley Town Council. Next steps required, given the upcoming elections, changing town council composition, I believe we need to treat previous discussions as preliminary context only. Schedule proper engagement with newly elected town council leadership, which I believe Louise is arranging a meeting with the leadership. Re-establish partnerships working on a solid democratic footing. As someone who understands both the district and town council perspectives, I would welcome your thoughts on the most appropriate way to rebuild the collaborative relationship. The heritage trail project represents genuine partnership between working multiple agencies, district council, county council, environment agency and local football club. And I'm keen to ensure Rugeley Town Council can participate meaningfully in shaping its future development. This has been a success, has stalled somewhat recently. I hope this clarifies current position. Please let me know if you need any additional information ahead of this evening's meeting. Best regards, councillor David Williams. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, can I just say, I didn't put in anything that is funding from Cannick because when we had the meeting, it was clear from Greg Stock that we weren't allowed to comment on that. So that's why there's no funding in this, so. That's why I didn't put anything in from that side.
So there are proposals on here that the council will consider. Number one, whether to allocate a budget to support the Hagley Fields drainage project and/or further work on the heritage trail. That is one of the proposals.
Do we want to comment on these one by one, Chair?
I was just going to ask that councillor Kirkham, thank you. So councillors, do you want to comment individually? Councillor Wilson?
What's the cost?
So we don't know, they don't know. The only thing you can suggest is if we want to support it, if we come up with an amount that we're happy to, then I can reinvent that in the budget, which I've got to start pointing to council in September. So we could agree with something that we would contribute. They're looking at other avenues of funding, so we're not the only ones. There's multiple different ones they're looking at to come all together to make a large sum of money. So it is, unfortunately, it's one of them where we don't know, they don't know. But unless we've got some kind of idea of what we're happy to do, then it's hard to take the talks forward or then go, well, until we find out figures, which we don't know.
Sorry councillor Kirkham, they've got his hand up.
I mean, this is, if we're not careful, this is a rabbit hole, isn't it? I mean, yes, they're, one of the biggest issues that gets raised around Rugeley is why can't we use Hagley Field? Every charter fair, it gets raised, yeah? We're talking about classic cars, you know, cars in the park or cars in the town, yeah? Unless you have an Environment Agency, the Environment Agency surely have to be on the hook for this because they have a commitment to return the field to the state it was in before, right? And it isn't. So I'm not sure how we can allocate any budget for this. And if we do allocate a budget and it's declared, then is that just going to be thrown into the pot from district and assumed to be there, right? So I think we just need to be very careful.
If we don't know what we're talking about regarding the project, why, I don't think it's better to wait a bit, when we'll have more information and then we can pick up a figure.
Can we look into that a bit further, get more information, bring it back?
Chair, please. Question for councillor Kirkham. Are the Environment Agency denying that it's their fault that it's like it is? Or are they saying it's natural?
To you, Chair, I can't really answer that because I wasn't, the last meeting I attended, which was three months before the one that's just taken place, the Environment Agency were waiting for the allocation of funding so they could actually do the research in terms of identifying what the problem is.
So it's their responsibility?
But I'm not sure whether they've actually had the funds allocated to do the research to determine what the problem was, yeah? That was the key question that I wanted asking and answering at the last meeting.
Thank you councillor Kirkham, councillor Morrell, sorry, I was waiting to ask a question.
My question is that if this is going to be a grand scheme of things, i.e. that money's going to be collected for the total pot, who is actually going to administer it? I mean, if we, are we going to be able to administer it in terms of our decisions in the council here? Or what, you know, it's just flying sky at the moment, isn't it?
So they have investigated it, they found the reasons why it's not draining correctly. They don't know how much it's going to cost to fix it yet because at the time of the meeting, they'd just found out that week what the problems were. If you, to answer your question councillor Morrell, if you did put a budget together, it'd just be a budget to spend against. So if there was any spending to come up, it would have to come back to full council to vote on. So it would just be like the town crier's budget of, we budgeted a thousand, one thousand five hundred, we have to bring back to council if we actually want to spend against that budget line.
Councillor Wilson?
Sorry, clerk, you said they found out what the problem is, who's that?
The Environmental Agency.
What's the problem?
There's a couple of problems, it's, it's very complicated. And to be honest, I really, I don't feel intelligent enough on that aspect to explain it. To be honest, it was very complicated, they got plans out and everything.
If they know what it is, they've not got a cast forward if they know the problem.
So at that meeting, they only found out that week what the problems were and there's two separate problems, so they hadn't had time to go and get it costed.
Thank you, one second.
Can I make a proposal to the Chair?
It's actually been deferred ultimately.
But with this problem with the Environment Agency, it's obviously stemmed from their situation. I think we should defer this until the Environment Agency say exactly what's wrong. You might put ten thousand in the pot and they make one hundred thousand. We might put five pound in the pot and they want two pounds fifty, so that's how you work in. And I suggest that we wait for them to propose, to tell us what's wrong with it and how, like councillor Prosser said, how much is it going to cost?
Thank you councillor Shepherd. Sorry councillor Kirkham, one last thing?
Yeah, one last thing, just to add another problem into the mix. With unitary council coming down the track, one of the things that we will have to look at as a council is whether we actually want to adopt Hagley Field, right? Because we're in a situation with unitary where if you don't, you might lose it, yeah? But that's another good reason for deferring it, that's all I'm saying.
No problem, so should we have a vote then? Who would like that item, item number one, to be deferred until we get more information? Thank you. Proposal number two, who should take the lead role in attending the heritage steering group and reporting back decisions or recommendations to full council? Councillor Gay?
Chair, I believe the decision was made at May meeting, that was councillor Kirkham.
That's what I was just going to say, I thought it was councillor Kirkham.
Yeah, I was surprised to see that on the agenda.
The only reason it was on the agenda was because of your email saying, do you, council, do you want me to carry on or not? Because obviously when you first got appointed to it, you were the Chair and because council didn't reply to you, I wanted to make it official, if you're staying on.
You're happy to stand on that, councillor Kirkham? Thank you very much. So. So the proposal is for councillor Kirkham to stay on as the lead and report back to the council. So councillor Kirkham, you proposing that?
Yep, I'll propose that.
I'll send it.
Thank you. Can we have a show of hands then, please? Thank you. Okay, proposal number three, whether the town council rooms may continue to be used free of charge for heritage steering group meetings. Any comments, councillor Kirkham?
Since we've done an awful lot of legwork to try and drag these people to the table, I actually feel it'd be pretty churlish to turn around and try and charge them. So my proposal would be that if it's for the benefit of the town, then we should actually swallow the cost for that. Because in real terms, unless we're actually going to take a room that somebody else would have been renting, it costs us nothing.
So you're saying yes then, continue.
Councillor Zelen?
My question is, what sort of charge are we talking about and how are the meetings?
The meetings are quarterly and the charge of the rooms, it depends on rooms, but you're in the ballpark of twenty pound an hour basically. Yeah, well, they're about two hours usually, I believe. I mainly wanted to get this on so we're above board because I would advise the council that it would be the right decision to go for a charge, but I want it cleared because at the minute we're going against the latest proposal, so I just want it cleared.
Sorry, councillor Shepherd, councillor Shepherd.
It's a question for councillor Kirkham. As you're the lead, you've obviously formed the committee, you're going to form a committee on the heritage thing.
Oh, I'm just the lead for the town council. The person who's actually leading the steering group is Greg Stock. Eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve?
Yeah. Now, the only reason I wanted to, through you Chair, the only reason I actually wanted to raise this one, and that is that the reason it was held here was that the first meeting we had involved a tour around the field so they could actually see exactly what the situation was. There's no reason why these couldn't be held in Cannick in the future. If having a, you know, if having a room here is a problem. I just felt it'd actually put us on the moral high ground if we actually got them here.
So do we have a proposal then?
I propose it.
Didn't finish, but councillor proposes to let them continue meetings to be free? Second up was councillor Kirkham, can we have a show of hands then for that, please? Thank you, okay. Item four, that future meetings must only take place when staff are available on site to ensure appropriate access and safeguarding. Any comments?
The only other thing I'd say there is that, you know, depending on timing, if there's, if it doesn't fit in with staff times, right? Then if a councillor is available to actually lock up after, then I would think that was acceptable, yeah?
Anyone else? Okay, so do we have a proposal then to say that it has to be appropriate access during staff times? When staff are here?
I'm going to go for that.
Thank you, councillor Fochet. Do we have a second up for that? Can we show, have a show of hands for that then, please? Okay, councillors against that item?
So it's for, so they need to take place when staff are available, okay?
Thank you everyone. So item one two six on the agenda is a Canva update. Until recently, the council had access to Canva Pro for creation of marketing materials, posters and other promotional content.
Sorry Chair, in the interest of time, right, we're talking about a hundred pound.
We are.
Can we just go to the proposal?
Not one, okay. That doesn't read it out. Okay, so it's to approve the hundred pound to be spent on Canva Pro.
I'll propose it.
Councillor Clark is seconded. Can we have a show of hands then, please?
I'll stand.
I don't like being a talker.
Okay, then one two seven is the local government reorganisation staff. Sure, Mel, to give an update.
Yeah, we have all had it, haven't we? Yeah, there is a letter that's gone out and I've requested a meeting with Cannick. I haven't had anything more local than the local, the reply that government gave Cannick, which was basically just to put more meat on the bones for their application, which we're waiting to go in. I am working in the background on devising a plan to hopefully slowly take assets from district into council that we feel that we may take over. I've been looking at the southern unitaries that have done things well and not so well. So I'll be formulating a better response for you to bring back to council after your August break. It's, I would like to advise council that we don't jump into proposals too early and prematurely. We're on the second round of this phase of unitaries and the first round hasn't started yet. So we don't want to make a proposal and then within the six months have to change it. So we need to make sure we're squeaking clean and not making the same mistakes as others. But obviously I know the countdowns are, which is why I'm working on it in the background. So I'll get more detailed plan for you to have more an informed decision coming out soon.
Councillor Shepherd?
Oh, can we ensure that, assuming you get the information, for council to get the information as well, so we can all do it together?
I just thought it was ironic that, to my mind, the most important item on the agenda was one two seven and it probably occupies at least space on the agenda. I think regardless of what comes from the investigations, the proposals have to be in, in sixteen weeks, right? That's not a long time. And there are certain things that, this is quite, I actually feel quite strongly about this. This is quite major, in that the parish councils and town councils are really going to have to up their game. Because the situation that's going to happen here, and I hope I'm wrong, but if I were on the other side, the unitary side, I'd be looking at all the things that bring in revenue and I'll have them. I'd be looking at all the things that bring in revenue and I'll have them, right? And any things that are going to cost us, right, then you can have them. And if you don't want them, we'll close them or we shut it down, right? Um, we're talking about Hagley Park, talking about Elmore Park, we're talking about the town hall, we're talking about the town hall clock, yeah? Plus the fact there are a lot of other things I think we need to get in place for unitary. Because although it's not going to happen until, um, twenty eight, twenty nine, then, you know, we're supposed to have a neighbourhood plan because planning is actually, we've got issues now with district planning and they're just down the road, right? If this goes to Tamworth or potentially to North Staffs, right? We're going to have issues there dealing with somebody even more remote than we are now. So neighbourhood plan is actually going to be an essential part of that. So that's not something that's going to occur within ten or twelve weeks, right? It's probably going to take the best part of a year to actually get together. So we should start doing that now, would be my recommendation.
Thank you councillor Kirkham. Put that down there?
There's.
Yeah, just the neighbourhood plan. We can't wait on that as a council, it's important. Sorry councillor, you, you did say you were watching the time, so.
Yeah, right. The other thing is we need, we need to start getting to grips with the governance review, right? To make sure that our wards and everything match up. And the most important thing is that we should be lobbying district and county now for actually part of the engagement that is supposed to be taking place. Because I'm on the council, I'm not aware of any of it has taken place. Now, it would be great, you know, if the clerk can, can forward with a, with a, a fully fleshed out proposal. But I actually think rather than follow the clerk on this, the council actually need to take some view on what it wants to do. I'll shift up the.
Thank you councillor Kirkham. Okay, you get this in down Mel? Thank you. Okay, item one to eight is the marquee and flooring opportunity. So at the last meeting, council discussed the potential purchase of a marquee and flooring for use at community events with the cost of six hundred pounds being taken from the Christmas budget. Council resolved that two further quotes should be sought for comparison purposes before proceeding. Three quotes have now been obtained, you should all have a copy of them. Um, quote one is a brand new marquee but with no matting, it's just under two thousand pounds. Quote two is a used marquee, no groundboard, no matting at one thousand one hundred and twenty five. And the third quote is a used marquee smaller than the one, um, that was brought to the table previously at ten metres by five metres with no matting at seven hundred and seventy one pounds and seventy two pence. Um, so the proposal is that the town council purchased the marquee and the matting from Lucy and Kevin at a total cost of six hundred pounds and they used some of the Christmas budget. Councillor Fadchak?
Just two questions, because I had to send emails and ask questions. And you don't think it would be better for us to have the response I received today from Mel? Some kind of proof with the company name or some specs of what we're buying? So that's the first question. How we receive the eBay quotation would be nice to have what we're buying. Nice black and white so we can read about. And the other question, I don't remember we as a council coming to discussion, we need a tent before, uh, now, why that has not brought to the council saying we lack of a tent and we need something like that? It's just sound a bit to me.
Okay, councillor Jones?
I think the, it came to the, the council because they want to get rid of it. That's the first thing. So the option is there to, to purchase this, uh, and at the last meeting, we said we would get three quotes, which we have. So I think I propose now that we should vote on it.
So councillor Morrell?
Why, why is it so cheap at the moment?
So it wasn't because they're trying to get rid of it because they're quite happy to put it on eBay and sell it for a lot more money. Um, what happened was when we went to Lucy and Kevin's wedding, a lot of the councillors that attended, um, were like, oh, this would be really good for covering the stage and the audience at the event because it's really quite substantial size. And, um, at Charter Fair, the covering that we had wasn't suitable. At previous events, we've had to get sponsors or pay for hire. So this would solve having to try and find a sponsor or hire it every year. Um, which is why, um, public councillor spoke to me and said, why don't we purchase that? So when I spoke to Lucy and Kevin about potentially purchasing, obviously they liked the council, Lucy worked here. So they gave it at a really reasonable rate, um, to try and help the council. But they're quite happy to just sell it for more money on eBay if you don't want it.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because if you buy cheap, then you normally get cheap.
Councillor Kirkham?
My question, I think we're in the weeds here, you know, I mean, my question is, why are we bothering you, you know? Um, a bargain's only a bargain if you're actually planning to buy it and then you find it going somewhere cheaper, right? So if councillors are, are not attending Lucy's wedding, would we still be looking at buying it?
Councillor Mel?
Something of this size, something of this size actually takes quite a lot of erection, right? Now, I, I know that, uh, a lot of councillors, unfortunately I couldn't be there, the Charter Fair, right, work long shifts, right? At the moment, we can actually rent gazebos, if we need a gazebo, from, uh, Baskett's, right? And it costs us twenty five, thirty pound a gazebo, right? They put it up, they take it down. Uh, at the Christmas lights, we, we use them, yeah? And, and why do we need flooring, you know? If we're going to use one of these things, it either goes on the, on the floor, it either goes on the tarmac or it goes on the grass, right? It's nice to help the, the staff with, with recovering some of their wedding costs, but is this right?
About that councillor Kirkham, I actually thought it would be better because the gazebos that we used at Charter Fair were no good for covering the stage and I actually didn't go to Lucy's wedding.
I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody.
And I've just mentioned to Mel, maybe we need something bigger and then it's brought up about the marquee.
But if we contrast that, if we contrast this with the stage that was there at the Christmas lights, right, which cost us nothing, right? And involved no councillors erecting it or taking it down, then I don't think there's any comparison, yeah?
Okay, councillor Mill, sorry, I know Mel, you want to say something, councillor Mill, you want to say something?
When is it going to be used?
Different events.
Like such as?
It can be used at the Christmas lights, it can be used as next year's Charter Fair with the town pride competition. Um, this time we did have, I don't know whether the event should down to Market Square on Charter Fair Day, but we had a section for VIPs, which were the elderly residents from Borscht Fair Cavo, as they were one of the sponsors of the Charter Fair. So they sat under, under different things, also dance.
So what you're saying then is at Christmas, are we not doing a stage? Is it going to be a gazebo?
No, there is a stage, there just isn't a high stage that the rock news it was on last year.
Right, okay. Have you decided that?
We haven't decided it yet.
So you're saying quite certain?
No, no. It hasn't been decided yet, nothing regarding Christmas lights has been decided yet. Yes councillor Kirkham?
It seems quite contentious Chair, so can I ask for a name vote on this?
Absolutely. So the proposal is then that, um, we purchase the marquee at six hundred pound, marquee and flooring. Do we have a proposal for that? And a second please? Can we have a show of hands then please? And please keep your hands up so Mel can write all of the names down. Okay, so councillors against purchasing that? So it's for, for purchasing?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you councillors. Item one to nine, dated the next meeting, the next meeting of the town council will be held on Wednesday, the third of September, twenty twenty five at seven PM. Um, the, I'd like to, um, exclude the public now because of likely disclosure exempt.